Never seen justice for all.
Thank you. I have to wait a few more seconds before nine o'clock and begin. Look at that. It's just, it's magical. All right, it is nine o'clock and we will call our commission meeting to order. We have as the first order of business today to adjourn. And so this is. Sinai dai, which is not a morgue expression, okay? Sinai dai is Latin for the ending of a term. And so that is the ending of this commission as it exists. And unusually, very unusually, this is a commission that is going to be fully reestablished as soon as we re- begin. And so what's different about that is that we usually would take some time at this point in time before ending to talk and reflect with individual commissioners who are coming off the commission and to provide some appreciative comments for their service. We don't have to do that because you can still continue to guide us as your public servants going forward as we reconvene. So is there a motion to adopt sinai dai?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a second, okay. All, any discussion by commissioners? No, none by you? Any discussion by the audience? All right, with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. We are adjourned. Now we have an opportunity to be sworn in by our city clerk. And she's going to give the oath of office to the four re-elected commissioners.
Do you want to stand? I tried to put those in order of your seating. If you'll raise your right hand, I'll read through completely and you respond. I do in the end. Do you solemnly swear that you are a citizen of the United States and the state of Florida and the city of Lakeland and have all the qualifications as required by the charter for the office upon which you are now about to enter? That you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Florida and the ordinances of the city of Lakeland? And that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office upon which you are now about to enter? So help you God.
Thank you.
Congratulations, welcome back.
Once you're done, can you pose and just look up at it? You can change my face.
Pose like this.
That way you don't get the top of your head in the photo.
Three, two, one. All right.
Thank you.
Are y'all gonna get pictures up there? Yeah, you got their families here.
Some families might flee.
Somebody was gonna sneak out.
Get the whole family. Awesome.
All right, three, two, one. All right, perfect.
Okay. I'm a center.
Yes. This is my ear. Three, two, one. Perfect.
Thank you. It looks great.
Here it, here, yeah.
They love these meetings in their hearts. All right, today we will have a motion to reconvene as the 2022 City Commission if someone will make it.
Motion to reconvene.
Second.
Motion to reconvene in a second and a discussion by potential commissioners or the audience. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes and we are reconvened as a city commission. One of the things that we have the opportunity to do is consider the election of a mayor pro tem. And so I have not recommended anyone in this regard and among your, so I'd like to know people who might be interested in that role.
I'm not raising my hand to say I'm interested. I was going to nominate Commissioner McCauley to continue serving. I think she's done an exceptional job. If she's interested.
Yes.
I'll second it. If we have a second.
All right, is there any discussion by commissioners? Any discussion by the audience? All those in favor of Commissioner McCauley serving as the second mayor pro tem signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. Thank you very much for that. So on we go. We have presentations this morning, beautifications awards. Mr. Cohen is in the room and we have both a commercial and residential beautification.
Let me see which one of them comes up first.
Residential.
First is going to be the residential award. This beautiful structure is located at 616 West Beacon Road. It was built in 1930. As you can see, it's been beautifully renovated and landscaped. And the award goes to Peter and Casey Kessler. Are they here to receive the award today?
Come on down, Peter.
I want you to, might want to make a few comments. He's got one up there for you.
Oh, wow. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's a really great picture of the house. I need to, I need to get that. It's been a great journey owning the house. It's got a pretty storied history. And it's just taken a long time to get where we are and we still have quite a bit of projects left to do to make it what it hopefully will be in our eyes, so.
What have you enjoyed most?
Golly, we've had family members come in and out. It has a mother-in-law cottage in the back, separate, separate, and a separate garage. And so mother-in-law was, my mother-in-law stayed there for 12 years and now it's become a she shed. So just been important, all of the buildings on the property just been really important to us. So it's been great to be here and be in this house.
Thank you.
Next we have the commercial award for this month located at 1211 South Florida Avenue. Tracy and Company Hair Designers. They always do a beautiful job maintaining their container gardens and planter boxes. And the containers actually serve a second purpose by helping to control the traffic flow around the sides of the building. So it's a really beautiful building. It's been there for quite some time and it looks great. Is there anyone here to receive this award? Oh, great.
So you've done a great job. Thank you. Any comments?
Good morning, Happy New Year to everyone.
New Year.
Thirty years celebrating in business. So thankful. So thankful. And so thank you very, very much for honoring the salon today with this award. We take a lot of pride in trying to make sure that everything looks nice for the city of Lakeland. And I'm just very thankful that this lovely crew behind us supported us in opening our business once again when we were closed down for COVID-19. So we're so grateful for small business because we make up two-thirds of all the business in America. And just for the record, I'm very thankful for Governor Ron DeSantis. Yes. Yes. Thank you very much.
Three, two, one.
Any additional comments, Bill, at all?
I think both have done a great job, I think. I mean, beautiful, the city looked beautiful too, so.
Thank you and thank you for your work in getting that all, all those details managed, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone here at all with respect to the National CRNA Week? Just wanted to make sure. We have no proclamations today, but that was a potential one and I just wanted to make sure before clearing through that. All right, that brings us to the committee reports and there are none. And then the approval of the consent agenda if there's a motion to do so.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, a motion to approve. And there are no asterisk items, so we're really talking about the minutes themselves. Any discussion by commissioners? Any by the audience? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The consent agenda is approved. We have no request to appear from the general public and we have an equalization hearing, so we will cease meeting as a commission again and become an equalization board. And then we will take our city attorney Davis and he will give us an update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city charter requires that the city commission convene as an equalization board prior to imposing a special assessment lien against private property. If you received a notice to appear this morning because the city has cut or cleared your property, this is your opportunity to address the city commission and object to that or ask any questions you might have about that issue. So if you received a notice to appear this morning regarding equalization, this is your time to speak. I don't believe we have anybody, Mr. Mayor.
I don't see any. Okay, so seeing none, is there a motion to approve the lots cleaning and clearing as recommended?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Reed and seconded by Commissioner Music. And discussion by commissioners? Any discussion by the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously approved. We reconvene as a commission and will stay that way the rest of the meeting. And we enter the period for public hearings and A1 ordinance at second reading.
Thank you. We have two ordinances for second reading this morning. The first is proposed ordinance number 21-058, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Lakeland, Florida relating to investment policies, making findings, amending ordinance number 5870, adopting a separate city of Lakeland investment policy for the Public Improvement Endowment Fund, provided for severability, provided an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, motion approved in a second. And any discussion by commissioners? Or questions? Any discussion or questions by the audience? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Commissioner Walker. Aye.
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 Aye. Unanimously passes.
Next is proposed ordinance number 21-059, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Lakeland, Florida relating to the purchasing of goods and services, making findings, amending ordinance number 5850 to modify the preference granted to local businesses for the procurement of goods and services pursuant to requests for proposals, requests for qualifications, and similar procurement methods provided for severability, provided an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second has been made. Any discussion by commissioners? Commissioner Reed.
Yes, former, can you go ahead and just, because this is a public meeting, can you elaborate a little bit on what we're doing here today so people would understand?
Sure. The city has previously adopted a local preference ordinance that grants a certain percentage preference to local vendors when they bid on a city project to do city work. Typically that takes the form of the city purchasing some kind of product, you know, and, you know, so we'll be purchasing an actual concrete, physical good. It's a sealed bid process, so vendors will submit a bid that will have a unit price, will have a, you know, $10 for X number of widgets, you know? So it's a very, very specific process. However, when we're doing some more complicated projects like redeveloping city property or other things that have a more, I don't want to say subjective, but qualitative aspect as opposed to purely quantitative aspect to them, the city oftentimes issues what's called requests for proposals or requests for qualifications. And what we have done up to now is we will form a selection committee and the selection committee will rank the different proposals and assign different points for those proposals. And our local preference ordinance up to now has said after all the different selection committee members provide their scoring, we will add 10 points to the end of that, which is, you know, is a small amount of a preference. And what this is doing is making that preference a little bit more, but that's not the main thing that this is doing. What we've found is that for different RFPs and RFQs, requests for proposals, requests for qualifications, we'll have different amounts of people on the selection committee, different numbers of people. And so if you have three people on a selection committee, 10 points assigned to that score will have a heavier weight than if you have 10 people on a selection committee. That's obviously going to dilute the local preference. So what this is doing is moving from a point basis to a percentage basis. And this is providing that we will provide a 5% local preference to the total score of the selection committee. So that will provide more uniformity to the process when you have RFPs or RFQs.
All right.
Thank you. I commend, I commend us for doing that. I think that's been needed for some time. Thank you.
It makes what is a good change even better. And so I think it's excellent. I agree. Any discussion by the audience? Concerns or comments? All right, seeing none, this is a roll call vote. This is Commissioner McLeod.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
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 All right, unanimously passes as well. Do you have no resolutions? There is not a report from the community redevelopment agency, so that brings us to city manager. And welcome back and I hope you enjoyed your vacation. You were missed while you were gone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and Happy New Year to the mayor and to the commission and to the citizens that the city of Lakeland serves. And probably most importantly to me, Happy New Year to the city staff. Our public servants 2020, 2021 has certainly been some trying times with the COVID conditions and our public servants that work here at the city every day have continued to work through that and continue to do so. And we're all excited and hopeful about healthier days ahead. So I want to thank the city staff for working through a couple of very difficult years. I have one item for presentation this morning. It's regarding a task authorization with Atkins North America to provide additional resident project representative or RPR services for the runway 10 CAT III approach to Lakeland Lender International Airport. The airport has substantially completed the upgrade from a CAT II instrument landing system to a CAT III ILS or instrument landing system. The CAT III system will allow aircraft with the appropriate equipment to land in virtually any weather conditions. Atkins North America has provided the oversight and construction engineering services for the project. Due to the project complexity and the impacts of COVID, the coordination of multiple vendors was affected, which resulted in additional construction time and construction oversight. The enclosed agreement that has been copied to the commission is for the RPR services associated with the additional oversight time in the not to exceed amount of $67,800. It's recommended that the city commission authorize appropriate city officials to enter into the task authorization number 15 agreement with Atkins North America for the not to exceed amount presented, and there are no appropriations required of this request. That completes staff's presentation, Mr. Mayor.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Moving forward.
Second.
In a second, okay. And that, this CAT III ILS is very, very significant because there are, is no safer system available for landing in zero weather conditions than this provides. And so this is only at very large major airports. We've talked about this several times in different commission meetings, but having this at our airport is wonderfully safe, not only for the payloads that are in those planes, but also for the people that live around the airport. And so this particular oversight of coordinating all the projects that are necessary to be able to get that fully implemented is what this is about. And so that allows us without, within the budget that is really already allocated for this entire airport improvements, to do that without any additional cost to the taxpayers beyond the appropriation we're making here. Any comments by citizens at all on this at all or questions? Seeing none, this is also a roll call vote. Oh, no, actually, I'm sorry, this is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. All right, thank you, sir. And do you have any auras as well?
No, sir, thank you.
Takes us back to our city attorney and we have a resolution 6B1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have proposed resolution number 22-001, a resolution relating to assessments determining the necessity for having cleaned and cleared certain properties within the city of Lakeland, provided for the assessment of liens against such property for expenses incurred in the cleaning and clearing thereof, provided an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved in a second. Any comments by commissioners or the audience? This is a roll call. Commissioner McLeod.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Unanimously passes. That brings us to miscellaneous reports.
Good morning. I have one item, an airport lease agreement, Ramona Seriani for the city attorney's office. This lease agreement is with King Sky Flight Academy LLC. They are currently an existing tenant at the airport that occupies about 1,587 square feet of office space and 6,000 square feet of hangar space. They specialize in private pilot training and what they are seeking to do pursuant to this new lease is add 668 square feet of additional office space and also increase or extend their term for one additional year, which would have a retroactive effective date of January 1st, 2022, subject to your commission approval. And then also provides for one additional one-year renewal option upon mutual written agreement of the parties. The additional base rent would be in the amount of $723.67 per month, and that is at a rate of $13 per square foot annually, which is consistent with what is currently being charged for that specific office space as well. That would thereby increase King Sky's monthly rent to $4,643.28. The renewal option, if they choose to exercise it, would also increase rental rate at a rate of 2%. The monthly base rent includes utilities, does not include any applicable taxes, which they would be responsible for in addition to the base rent. And we would. For your favorable approval.
Both approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve in a second. And any discussion by commissioners? Commissioner Reed? Done?
Done. That sounds good to me. I was going to ask our attorney what their previous rent was, but I did the brief deduction here and I figured it out.
It's consistent what was previously being charged.
I just always turn to you. All right, any discussion by members of the audience? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. I'm sorry, voice vote. All those in favor signify same. Unanimously passes. That takes us to utility. And since you're still there, HC1.
We have one task authorization. This is with GeoSynTech Consultants Inc. This is for the engineering design using the closure turf system for final closure of the byproduct storage area at McIntosh Power Plant. I believe the commission's been briefed on this type of material that is intended to be used. The closure turf system is a geomembrane layer bonded to, that will bond to the artificial grass or turf material used, that will be used to cover the byproduct storage area. And specific to this task authorization, this isn't the purchase of the actual closure turf system itself, but instead this is related to all the engineering and design that goes into that, including the calculations of trying to determine size and permitting requirements that are required. And also GeoSynTech will also be working with city staff to develop bid documents that will actually procure the system and handle the installation part of that. We anticipate three to four months to finalize the engineering design and then another three to five months for permitting that will take place with FDEP. And at that point, city staff will probably come forward with another agreement for the city commission to approve, to approval of the actual purchase of the system itself and related installation costs. The total cost, not to exceed cost of the work for the engineering and design of this is $240,470. That's included in Lakeland Electric's FY 2022 budget, and this is in accordance with the continuing contract for environmental consulting services that the city commission had previously approved.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
In a second, okay. And I'll begin the discussion. This seems like a very, very high price for engineering for something that is very, would seem simple, like let's put a blanket on it.
I can, I can just, in full disclosure to the commission, the actual cost of the system is very substantial and the estimates have been around $9 million for the closure turf system itself and then an additional $3 million. And that would be for 30 years of maintenance. But I think in looking at the cost and benefit of using this type of system over the long run, it actually will save some money. But it is, it is not an expensive system.
Yeah, and some additional comments, that would be great from Lakeland Electric.
Steve Reinhardt, plant manager, energy production. Just, you know, to reiterate, I mean, it is an expensive proposition to close the byproduct storage area. We have to redesign the whole stormwater system. All the stormwater will now flow into Fish Lake instead of flowing through our system and into the combined sump and so forth and through our, our waste treatment system. So there's a lot to that. You got to level the thing, the landfill out. We have to move our process ponds into the landfill. So there's a lot of design, a lot of permitting associated with this process. So it's really a lot of work associated with it.
And it ensures compliance as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. You want to, you know, but there are CCR rules, there are state rules, there's federal rules, so we got to make sure we are 100% in compliance.
And so I just wanted to have you kind of illustrate that because of the fact that this is not a simple task.
Oh, no. It's a very complex task. I mean, very, very complex.
Any other comments by commissioners? Commissioner Reed.
Would these, most of these discharges be BTAC?
Excuse me?
Would they be BTACs?
I'm not sure.
Environmental, media contaminants or?
Oh, it's, it's all the, you know, it's all the coal residue.
Okay.
That is in our, in our, you know, you could, you know, the byproduct storage area. It's not a landfill until we cap it and actually close it out. Currently, we still have, you know, material in our process ponds that we have to move in it and then it becomes a landfill at that point. But yes, it is strictly the material from unit three.
And most of your, all of your exterior storage is moved, correct? Of the coal?
Correct, yeah. It's all, it's all either in the process ponds or in the actual byproduct storage area at this point. We have, all the coal is, I'm sorry, all the coal has been removed from the site. Our, you know, our sumps have been cleaned out and so forth. So, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, we've cleaned the boiler itself, so that, you know, the only thing left is the process ponds that we have. And we keep, you know, we're still pumping water through them. We're still moving water until we get done with the demolition and so forth.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions or comments by the audience? This is a significant expense and significant effort and will continue to be, and it is in the budget. This is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. This brings us to the audience portion of the meeting, and I want to point out that that's before 9:30. Because I don't ever remember that before.
Never.
Never.
So if anybody would like to speak, just state your name and address, please, and that's, you have five minutes. Thank you.
First, good morning to you all. You all look chipper for 2022. My name is Gloria Hodgson. I am president of the POA at Foxwood Lake Estates. I'm here to talk about fire stations. Before we do, our committee has 545 homes. Before we do, our committee has five hundred and forty-five homes. Foxwood Village, which is attached to us, has three hundred and fifty-six homes. In the last couple of years or so, there's been Big Oaks Apartments put in, a hundred and thirty-six units, and then there's another one across from that. I have no idea what, how many units that is. Our fire station is station three, which is response time to our area is twelve to fifteen minutes. The response time should be four to five minutes. If you go beyond us, it's even more obviously. I do realize that the budget of eight hundred thousand dollars is in for the relocation of station three this year, I believe. We believe a new station should be built at North Lakeland and that station three stays as it is. As you know, we are growing very fast, faster than probably most cities in Florida. There is new nursing homes going up, new apartment buildings, new homes, et cetera. You're aware of that more than I am. We're here today, Foxwood Lake Estates, that's what these lovely people are, to back us. All right? We would like to see the city put a new fire station at North Lakeland, so the time response is less, and we will have a chance to survive a fire. At this time, can you tell me, any one of you, where we're at on this issue as a fire station, relocating a new one? What is your plan? Could you share that with us?
Our city manager.
Yes, we have, for some time, we have been setting aside funds in order to locate a site in that North Lakeland area that you've asked about. Unfortunately, some of the properties that we have taken a look at and had discussions with property owners have been a little out of reach in terms of cost. We're working with the fire chief and our fire administration, along with our special projects manager, Jason Willey, to continue to try to locate a site. We've recently even had conversations with Polk County about a property that they own and a potential swap that we might could do with a piece of property that the City of Lakeland owns. But unfortunately, the county wasn't interested in swapping out for that piece of property. So we will be coming up in February as part of the city commission's strategic planning process. That will be one of the topics for discussion about how we might advance the ability to purchase or acquire a property in that North Lakeland area. But it's being studied closely. The fire chief and his administration are working on that every week. It's just a matter of finding the right location and one that, that week the city can afford.
Thank you. One question. Could you tell me, are you leaning towards a brand-new station or relocating station three?
Those decisions have not yet been made. There's been discussions even with the commission that include both options, and that should be part of our February strategic planning upcoming discussions.
So do you think you'll have a decision at the end of your meeting? Is there a chance that you might have a decision?
I'm hoping we might have some direction about a plan to move forward. The timing of that is difficult to say, because if we're able to allocate the funds, we would need to go through the acquisition process. So I can't really give any specific timeframe, other than we know that at our late February, and it's a, it's a public meeting for strategic planning, that that will be part of the discussions that the commission will have.
And could you tell me, sir, when that would be? Do you have a date?
I will get that date for you.
Thank you.
I believe it's February twenty-fourth, but let me, let me check and get an absolute date on that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you for the lovely job you're all doing.
Thank you, and thank you for your drive to a close. I like that. You're a great voice for your homeowners association.
Ma'am, additionally, Commissioner McLeod, I think, just confirmed it's?
The twenty-third and twenty-fourth, February twenty-third and twenty-fourth, so.
We don't know what date do we, which, which?
It's a Wednesday and Thursday.
Okay. I mean, we may not address that topic till on the twenty-third or the twenty-fourth.
I believe the way we have it scheduled right now, the twenty-third is our primary day, and the twenty-fourth is kind of if, if we overrun and need time on the morning of the twenty-fourth, so the twenty-third would be the, the date that we would look to hopefully have that discussion.
That'd be the R P funding center, right?
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I believe so.
Yeah. Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Karen Decker, and I also live at Foxwood Lake Estates. I just wanted to add that we are a retirement community of manufactured homes, and there are a number of other such communities in the general area. And being that small of homes, if there were a fire, a twelve-minute to fifteen-minute response time would probably result in the home being totally destroyed and the neighboring houses probably affected. So we really would like to see a new fire station in our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other comments from the public? Yes, sir. Just state your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name's Richard Brown from City of Lakeland, Lakeland, Florida, five-two-one East Belavista Street. I'm here today because there's an issue, I, I'm prepared, so if, you know, I didn't, this is off the cuff, and it's partly because of the chief of police. I had an issue I need to take up with the Citizens Review Board or the Citizens, what is it called? The Advisory Board. I'd like to speak with the board and maybe the city manager, see if you can talk to somebody about these, these meetings that they have. I'm assuming they fall under the Florida sunshine law. They're supposed to be open to the general public. Twice I've tried to attend, and I've tried to get information about when they're coming, and I keep, when I call City Hall, I get directed back to the police department, in particular, the chief. The reason why I'm here today, and I'm a little upset, I'm mad at the chief, I wanted to talk to them about the chief's behavior during a recent phone call. I asked him when the meeting was. Nobody over there or here seems to know, and it seems to go straight through him. He told me today. It's today. That's why I'm here, because I'm angry, because I called before I came down here, and your city staff's telling me it's on the twenty-fourth. He told me the first Monday. I don't know if he's confusing it with the city commission meeting. Okay. With that said, now I'm here, I might as well bring up the issue with you guys about the initial problem. I was doing an investigation, journalist investigation for a YouTube channel I'm running about the Paul Romero shooting for the Lakeland Police Department, and I wanted to gather some information. I had issues getting a hold of P I O. I mean, the dispatch, nobody, it seemed like they were playing games with me, and I wasn't real happy about it. Never even asked to speak to the chief, just wanted to get hold of Ms. Tillot. And somehow, the chief calls me up, and I wanted to ask questions because there's two different narratives going out. There's one with the original narrative during the shooting that was the initial press release that the gentleman was, you know, a suspect car in a, in a area he wasn't supposed to be in when the police investigated it. He drew a gun and fired on him, and, and basically, they returned fire, and that's what happened. There's another narrative came out a few days later by other news channels that he was on, on-duty security guard for a private company, securing the actual construction of the roadway, and that he had a gun, but he didn't fire it, and it was just a tragic accident. And I believe that, but I wanted to investigate it, and I wanted to possibly talk to the police department so we can change how they approach some things, so there's no accidental shootings that occur, because we live in a community with one of the highest per capita gun ownerships in this country. Anyway, when I talked to the chief about it and questioned certain things and tried to get records, he just yelled at me on the phone. I mean, and I have a lot of respect for him, and that's the first time he's ever done it, but he just yelled at me, made inappropriate comments, talking about he felt sorry for me, and wouldn't tell me why. And that's why I wanted to talk to the Citizens Advisory Board, because that's just not a way to do business. It's not professional, and, and if we have an issue, I mean, I've been, I get, the sheriff's department in my house, I live right on the border of the jurisdiction. The sheriff's department shows up to my house twice a year, peeking through the windows because a nine, a mysterious nine-one-one call comes in from my home. I haven't had a landline for fifteen years at that home. I don't know why. I've already told them to quit it because they showed up at like three o'clock in the morning, peeking through my windows one time. I actually had a gun in my pajamas out in the yard, and I had to throw the gun away before I walked around the corner because I realized it was a deputy. I mean, that very well could have been me. I could have gotten shot by a police officer. I mean, that, that's all I'm attempting to do. I'm trying to find out what's going on and try to talk to some people and try to make some change. Wasn't trying to insult the chief at all. Him putting out preliminary reports that there was a shooting and it possibly wasn't, that, that he fired the gun, it's, there's, there's, I can show you YouTube videos across the country where chiefs have lost their careers because they've made those statements based off the information provided to them, and then it came out, there's video, there's witness testimonies. I don't want the chief to be fired. I don't want him to lose his job. I'm not trying to insult him. I'm just trying to give some information, and it doesn't need to be taken personally. If we have an issue with police officers approaching things, situations where they're not aware of, where this kind of thing can happen, I think they'd want to talk to people. And two, the, the main reason why I'm talking to you is about that meeting. That, y'all need to have that scheduled, just like you do for this meeting or any other meeting. Needs to be put up somewhere, needs to be posted.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Appreciate it.
You guys have a nice day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If we go back to the situation regarding the fire situation, fire department situation, and because that's area where the citizens here today is my district, and I walk that area quite a bit, Mr. Sharaus, I'm going to ask if you can have Chief Riley to give us some information about the runtime, because I walk that area quite frequently between Fire District, Station Three, I mean, Fire Station Three, excuse me, and as far north as right at the butt of what this community is. And I have a concern about the, the timing. So if you could share, find it out for me and let me know, and let us know. I think it's important for us to have that information, please.
Yes, sir. We can definitely pull a report and have that information available to the commission.
Yes, thank you.
And that would be valuable for our strategic planning.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, there's a presentation being prepared already for the strategic planning session, but we can get some of that information to you even certainly in advance of that very soon.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioner McLeod?
And just to follow up to that, thank you, Commissioner Walker. It would be helpful, and maybe this is part of the presentation, to know the, the process for how we decide a new station versus relocating a station. That hasn't happened since I've been on the commission to have that discussion, so I'm just curious, how do we decide? I think, and I thank our residents for being here this morning, for showing your support, lending your voice, and if you don't show up and tell us what's important to you, oftentimes we don't, we don't know, but you do make some, some good points about the growth that we're seeing and the need for additional public safety and fire services. And so how do we, how do we manage that? How are we thinking about that for the future? Hope that's part of the presentation. Would like to see that. Sean?
Yes, sir.
Can I?
Yes, ma'am. State your name and address.
It's on the fire thing? Oh, Abby Griffin. I'm living from Foxwood Lake Estates also. What would be the point of moving Station Three? And what would happen to the people who are already being served appropriately by Station Three? I mean, it just, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make any sense to me to have it moved. You need more space, more equipment, whatever.
So they would measure the times of the runs?
That's right.
If I were in this area here, and I can be here and still serve everyone within a timeframe, that's what we're looking?
But you wouldn't be able to, because they can't do it now. And so why moving it is not going to change, help the people that are already there.
And public safety and protecting quality of life is paramount to us, so we're with you.
Okay.
If you can't demonstrate that those runtimes would be the same or would serve adequately, then you're absolutely right, we need a new station. We also are fiduciarily responsible for how we spend taxpayer money, so it's always weighing those two things. And, but public safety is here, the costs are here in terms of priority.
Okay. Hope to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Edward Griffin, Foxwood Lake Estates. I don't have the numbers, but one of my concerns was when you're talking about either moving the station or getting a new one, the number of calls that each fire station is getting now is up near twenty thousand, and the national average is down like twelve thousand. I don't have the figures, but they are already overstressed, and to just move their station, like my wife was saying, would not solve the problem. Need a new station so that the number of calls responded to each year per station is closer to the national average.
That's all part of what we'll, we'll look at too, sir. Thank you. Any other comments? We appreciate you all coming out and making your case, and presence is very important to us. Thank you. It's not missed. Any other comments from the audience at all? Before we close the audience portion of this? All right. And on any topic that you want? All right, yes. Just making sure, because I'm thinking.
You said about any topic, eh?
That was the activator. Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Jerry Kimmel, again, still a law-abiding, taxpaying citizen. Last time I was here, I quoted from eight different presidents of the United States on what they thought and believed the Bible to be in their lives, and I had one more that I wanted to read to you, and then I'll go on to something else. Okay. F D R Franklin Delano Roosevelt. I ended with this one last time, but I wanted to reiterate it because it was just so powerful. He said, "The influence of the scriptures in the early days of the republic were plainly revealed in the writing and thinking of the men who made the nation possible. They found in the scriptures that which shaped their course and determined their action." So if we really do believe the Bible, then we will let it do that in our lives, too. It will actually shape our course and determine our action. You know, Jesus said that we are to be not just hearers of the word, but doers of the word. Otherwise, we deceive our own selves. Oh, I have one more good one. This is from Napoleon, you know, obviously a general and an emperor in France. He said, "The Bible is more than a book. It's a living being with an action, a power, a power which invades everything that opposes its extension." And the reason I quote these people is because of another quote that I, I found. It said, "Great authorities make great arguments." And so I just want you to know what great men have said and believed about the Bible. Proverbs fourteen-twelve, this is what happens to a society when they don't believe the Bible. Proverbs fourteen-twelve says, "There's a way which seems right unto a man, but the end thereof are the ways of death." So we need to take time out of our lives to find out if the Bible is really true. If it's, if it's going to determine our action and set the landmarks of our life, we need to know what it says. And let's talk about what it says about the unborn. "I must speak up on behalf of those which have no voice." I want to read to you now out of Proverbs. I actually just found these two verses last week. I couldn't believe I had never seen it before. This is Proverbs, chapter thirty-one, verses eight and nine. It says, "Speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves; ensure justice for those being crushed. Yes, speak up for the poor and helpless, and see that they get justice." You know, the unborn don't yet at that point have a voice, and so I am here today to speak up on behalf of those with, with no voice. I believe, and I believe the Bible says, that human life begins at conception, not at viability. Let me read, quote to you what it says in Jeremiah, chapter one. Let me, let me read it to you from the amplified, because it's a little more wordy. It says, "Then the word of the Lord came to Jeremiah, saying," before, this is the Lord speaking, "He said, 'Before I formed you in the womb, I knew and approved of you as my chosen instrument; and before you were born, I separated you and set you apart; and I consecrated you and appointed you as a prophet to the nations.'" In Isaiah, chapter forty-nine, forty-nine, verse one, Isaiah speaking, said, "The Lord has called me from the womb. From the body of my mother he has named..." From the body of my mother he has named my name." And in verse five, he said, "And now says the Lord, who formed me from the womb, to be his servant." I want to go now to Psalm 139. This may or may not have been read any other time, but it's so powerful. You know, every time you read it, you get something more out of it. This is Psalm 139. I want to read first verses one through four. "Lord, you have examined my heart and know everything about me. You know when I sit down and stand up. You know my thoughts even when I'm far away. You see me when I travel, when I rest at home. You know what I am going to say even before I say it." And then finally, verses 13 through 16. He said, "You made all the delicate inner parts of my body, and you knit me together in my mother's womb. Thank you for making me so wonderfully complex. Your workmanship is marvelous, how well I know it. You watched me as I was being formed in utter seclusion, as I was woven together in the dark of the womb. You saw me before I was born. Every day of my life was recorded in your book." So, there we go.
That ends well. Thank you, sir.
I'm getting pretty good at this. I did four minutes and 59 seconds last time. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmel. Any other comments from anyone else in the audience before we close? All right, actually, we aren't closing. We have one more item in business, which is to, we end the audience session there. To, for the mayor and members of the city commission to accept the commission committee assignments with the addition, as mayor pro-trim of Commissioner McCarley. Is there a motion to approve?
Question to approve?
Second.
And a second. Discussion, Commissioner Reed. Do you have any?
No, thanks. I like, I like my assignment. There again, I noticed that Commissioner Music is not a chair of anything. If he wanted to be chair of the real estate, I would substitute that to him, but still like to be on the committee itself.
So that wouldn't bother you to switch that?
It would not bother me to switch that if he wants to be chair of that stuff.
Commissioner Music, does that bother you to switch that?
No, that's fine. Appreciate it. We'll lean to your guidance for direction on that.
All right. Anybody have, anyone who made the motion have a problem with that on real estate? Does that change your committee chair to be Mr. Music? Commissioner Music and Commissioner Reed would be on the committee. The committee remains the same. Any other desires?
Just a comment. Well, I think it's, thank you, Mayor, for the thought you put into this. And this is something that I try to share with people and neighbors and residents, is the assignments that we have on these committees, because there's so many hours that go into this that are outside of these meetings and representing our city and doing our job. And so I know all of you, you're plugged in and representing Lakeland in these different councils and committees throughout the county and beyond. And so it's, it's a major role, and it's one that is very important for our city.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other comments by commissioners? Okay, with those two changes, and they're incorporated within the motion, is there any other discussion from the audience? Seeing none, this is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same. Unanously passes, and that will be our committee assignments. This would be a great time for the commissioners to share anything they would like to share before we adjourn. Is there anything, as the new year gets started? Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Happy New Year to my fellow colleagues and the audience here as well, and those who may be listening. Again, I want to remind us of some important dates coming up here very soon. We shared that, of course, at our last meeting before we break for the holiday, but also we'll make sure we know that. And as well as, in the next few days, we've got a couple of things coming up that we'll make sure not only we're aware of, but the listening audience, audiences aware as well. You know, we've got MLK celebration coming up here in a few days. We kick off with Jazz in the Park event on the 14th of January. And of course, because that particular event has grown in the last six years, it's moved from Simpson Park, where it has been, now, of course, to downtown Moon Park. So it'd be Moon Park this year, January 14th, Friday evening, 5:30 to 9:30. I think you're going to be very well pleased with how it's shaped up. And I'm very well pleased with how some young professionals in our community, and when I say community, I don't mean just Black community, I mean Lakeland as a whole. The community has done to support this particular celebration as we recognize the observance of MLK Day. Of course, if you know, the parade is the next day, which is Saturday, and then you've got the prayer breakfast that Monday. And I figure maybe one or two other community events are happening during that week as well. I have not seen those particular dates yet, but I've been hearing some talk about some additional kind of, the oratorical contest is usually done during that week as well, the youth oratorical contest as, during that week as well. So we'll make sure you're all aware of that. I wanted to say, we have done, I think the community of Lakeland, Lakeland as a whole, has done a magnificent job with supporting our effort when it comes to the Lakeland History and Culture Center. You know, we had talked about, of course, as a commissioner, as you all know, when you all had approved X amount of dollars, which is $300,000 to support the renovation of the, of our main library, to support the Lakeland History and Culture Center that have been housed inside the library there. But we had to take care, the actual interior design and the layout. And we had set a goal of $150,000, that committee did, under the direction of our finance kind of guru, I call him, former Commissioner Don Salvich, who took the lead to help support getting the dollars we needed for that effort. I stand here now and tell you, we are pushing almost $200,000. That's a blessing.
That's, that's great.
As the community of Lakeland turned out and have shared, have given, and not only given in their finances, but given in some thoughts and even, I call them, material that we might want to use, or that may be used in the library for that particular history and culture center. So on March 11th, as I've shared before, we, we schedule, we, we think we timed properly to, to keep the announcement as it is. For March 11th, there's going to be the gala, which is a private showing of the actual Lakeland History and Culture Center. Then again, it'll be inside our main library downtown here. So that's going to be on that date, and the invites are getting ready to go out to those who have sponsors and those who've given, of course, toward making this effort a success. So we'll make sure you all know about that as well. And I think that is my particular comments. Again, thank you all for all you do and continue to work as we do to make Lakeland what we want Lakeland to be.
It is exciting to see what has happened, just pivoting off of your comment on that. And in fact, The Ledger had Dr. Brisbane Stone this morning on the front page talking about the Wells opening. Business Observer, which just came out with its new article for this week, it has the Catapult story on it with Christian Strawberry, who's its president, and a great article in here, this is a Tampa Bay area journal, talking about how innovative Catapult is with respect to the city. The 200 businesses have already been launched out of Catapult since its inception, and that this growth continues as a result, and they have 230 members. So when you think about opportunity creation and part of what's in place, it's exciting to recognize that this is how you make that two-thirds of businesses, those small businesses that we referred to earlier today, continue to grow and continue to provide services. Any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Madden.
Thank you, Mayor. So I am really excited and looking, so glad you're here to kind of kick off conversation about our strategic planning retreat. I know we always look forward to that every year, to be able to get among our colleagues and not necessarily only be discussing ordinances that are given to us, but also have a chance to brainstorm and dream about the future for Lakeland and to hear about the needs specific to different neighborhoods. So thank you for coming and look forward to you paying attention as we all learn more about the fire station and so much more in February. We were able to kind of submit some commission requests, and we've been formalizing our strategic plan, starting off with Sean Charaus's leadership last year, so that we can kind of filter some of those things through that. But certainly with COVID, the last couple of years, a lot of things seem like they're not happening, or you're wondering where, where that went, you know? So I hope, I'm hopeful that this year, you know, we'll be able to really get back on track and think about other things, you know, besides pandemic mitigation strategies for this commission. The other thing that I also just wanted to remind my colleagues about is that Scott Bishop is our emerging technology director for Lakeland Electric. And with the decommissioning of our coal plant, and certainly if you pay attention to this, this body at all, you realize that we bonded six new rice engines coming. They are natural gas turbines, but they can be injected with a clean hydrogen option on day one to 20%, and then even potentially up to 100% if that becomes more viable, if there's more green hydrogen available. And they're, and they make strides in that technology. The whole goal is, before we make another investment in about eight years, which is what we'll need to do to, we're going to do some purchased power in between now, and we're going to add some solar, but we don't want to invest in technology that is not the best that we can do, you know, for our Lakeland community, either too expensive to cause our electricity to be too expensive just on new technology. These are huge investments, long-term investments with long life cycles. And so Scott Bishop had asked our electric utility committee to have some homework, and he assigned us a book, you know, like our hate Bill Gates, you know, I, I have read it, and I will say that it is very nonpartisan, non-political. He just basically is talking about the science, different technology. He talks about people who care about the climate crisis from all different angles, political, philosophical, who don't believe it at all, everything in between. But then if you are in electric utility, you know, knowing your SWOT analysis, your opportunities and your threats and going forward and the exorbitant amount of money that you invest to provide electricity, and where we are positioned right now, where we will be making investments now that we've decommissioned coal, I think it's incumbent on us to make sure we're doing our homework to see what technologies out there, the obstacles that are in the way, the things that need to be advanced before we can make such huge decisions. And so I'm just hopeful that my colleagues have read or, or still have a little bit of time before our next utility committee meeting, because I know Scott, it, it really just, it, it does demystify several things. It is, it covers agriculture and transportation and not just providing electricity as, with regard to emissions. But I think it's very comprehensive, very simple to read, and just, you know, very, you know, kind of basic science, but also brings in the economics, brings in cultural differences, brings in the whole planet. So I, I feel like it's, it's a pretty good primer, and it's called, Bill Gates, "How to Avoid a Climate Disaster: The Solutions We Have and the Breakthroughs We Need." So that was assigned to us by Scott Bishop, and I just hope that, you know, everyone's doing their homework so we can all kind of be on the same page with a basic understanding of where we are.
Excellent.
Thank you for the reminder.
Yes, and Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. There again, I'd like to wish everybody a good 2022. I think that comes from all of us. Other than that, I'd like to give a little shout out to our communications department and Kevin Cook. I really appreciate the posters we have in the elevators. They give me an sense of what's going on in the community and a lot of things that you don't really hear about a lot. But it's, if you're here, when you're at, ride the elevator, take time to read them, and you'll be informed of different activities we have going throughout the city that are fun and not too expensive as a go-to, and, and it really gives you a lot of information on what's, what you can do here within the city. And I appreciate your having those posters up, and it gives me informed, I guess you'd say, what's going on.
For purposes of inclusion, the stairwell people, of course.
I do that too, but.
I want to commend the communications department on the internship social media post the other day, and to keep pushing that out looked really good. Commend city manager Charaus on making internships a priority for the city of Lakeland. It's something that we've only had in the summers, and I feel like that that's something we discussed in strategic plan, at least I have the last three years. So I appreciate the movement on that, and just FYI to communications, y'all did a good job with that, and keep pushing it out.
Excellent. Glad you mentioned that. Any other comments? Commissioner McCloud.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to ask our city manager, you had mentioned to, to me about the parklets coming in today, just to share an update on that. I know we have policy that's coming about sidewalk cafes and parklets, to talk more about that soon, but I think it's exciting that we have two that are on their way and will be installed, I think, today.
Yes, we do have, we've been communicating with Julie Townsend, with the LDDA, and have been working up to, to this point today. And I'm, I'm not exclusively familiar with the delivery time, but I'm told that they will be delivered sometime today, and was told that I believe there's a gentleman who is even flying in, who will be helping with the construction of that sometime this afternoon. We will be coming before the commission. It's actually going before the planning and zoning board, they're in the month of January. So in February, we plan to bring to the commission the information related to the past discussions we've had about sidewalk cafes and, and parklets. But we should see, hopefully, a couple of those put in, put in place at least potentially today.
Great. Yes, Commissioner Madden.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm so glad you brought that up, Commissioner McCloud. I didn't know, you know, that that was imminent, like today. But I will say, I just wanted to appreciate and, and thank you, Sean, for your leadership with regard to, I mean, I remember, like, I think it was four years ago, I sent pictures from San Francisco of parklets, you know, and, you know, could we have parklets? This magical, you know, thing. And then everyone was like, no one wants to eat outside, you know, it's too hot in Florida. And then, you know, COVID expedited, you know, the, like, oh, people can actually sit outside and enjoy it, to then actually having some arriving. And I say all of that to say, you know, you know, four years is a long time to start discussions, and we're about to have discussions on our strategic planning, to see things come to fruition is so exciting. But I also know that you have a responsibility, as does our city attorney, to make sure things are fair and they're implemented with regard to, you know, pricing and structure and that. And I know that weighs heavily on you as the city manager. So we can come up with these ideas, like I can want scooters, and we can all want, you know, all these things. And then you have to bear the burden of making sure, you know, that these things are appropriately done. And so I just want to say, you know, that, that balance of power and that, to be able to say, you know what, we're going to go forward and we're going to expedite this because, you know, getting it in now when it's cool weather and we can still enjoy it, rather than before we have it all buttoned up and exactly perfect and all of our codes, you know, six months from now and it's hot and it's, you know, I just, I just want to say thank you publicly for maybe letting things go, like getting the lights in the trees and getting the parklets going and getting some things established, because just like our local vendor preference was something that we wanted to do, it was actually a written ordinance, and then we found out today that there was something we could do to tweak it and make it better. I feel like that's how it is, you know, in local government, you hear from your neighbors, you hear from the public, you hear from the restaurants who actually have the parklet. Things will, can morph and change and ebb and flow, and I think that instead of waiting until something's perfect, sometimes we wait too long. And so thank you for letting us kind of just, let's just do it. It's something that our, you know, public likes and we enjoy and we want, and then if we do need to make some modifications through planning and zoning and through actually, you know, walking it out and seeing how it goes. So I just wanted to say that, because I know we're about to get into strategic planning, and we have great ideas that we don't have to figure out how all the, it's going to really work. And so thank you for being a good sport to, to do some of these things, but then letting us also have some time to kind of get them all buttoned up.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Madden, and also Commissioner McCarley for that earlier recognition. You know, as the city manager, I'm managing the city, but there are a lot of staff personnel that are handling all of the kind of minutia and detail that you're referring to. It's always, you know, difficult to make sure that we're protected as far as any liabilities and the like, and, and making sure that the citizens are recovering whatever cost is associated. So there's an awful lot that goes into it. But I can tell you that on Saturday afternoon, when I was sitting outside of Harry's, looking across at the sidewalk cafes and seeing the people enjoying the downtown, that's what it's all about. So for all the difficulty that goes into, you know, kind of making the sausage, at the end of the day, when, when, when we see everyone enjoying those amenities, it, it lifts everyone's spirits. So thank you very much, both of you.
Dogma and all those comments. I took a bike ride with my family last night, and we were downtown through Moon Park, and everyone was going, this is just magical here. And, and it is, it really is, with the Christmas lights, and you look at Parkland, Rex does, they've just done a fabulous job. And, and so thank you. I agree. Commissioner Reed.
Just briefly, Sean, since we're on this topic, can you, for the general public, tell them where the parklets are going to go?
The two parklets that I've been advised are scheduled for delivery today are for Frescos and Harry's, and those are kind of the first two that have taken advantage of the opportunity. And so again, if, if everything goes out And so again, if everything goes as scheduled as I've been advised, we may see those in place even this afternoon. Now, when they will be actively used, we're still working through that. There's some insurance work that's going on behind the scenes, but I don't think it'll take very long if there's any delay at all.
And you might comment on that's an LDDA purchase on the parklets?
The LDDA is assisting those business owners, I believe, with some of the funding for those opportunities, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Walker?
Mr. Mayor, thank you again, and just draw my memory while we're giving some accolades. As many of you all know, we had this end of the year almost situation that happened with the fire over at Lakewood Terrace, which used to be called Citrus Gardens. And I think we should tell and let it be known that our, both our LFD, Lakeland Fire Department, and LPD, Lakeland Police Department, did, I think, an excellent job in making sure that family suffered greatly as a result of that fire at the apartment complex, and how the response was very, I think, done in a very timely way, and things taken care of. Driving by there and seeing some of the things that happened right after that, I thought, wow, you know, it's good to know, again. We know public safety is number one, as the mayor has already indicated, and of course, as the listener audience is hearing us talk about it today from the association that Fox Lake Estates are coming to share with us. But I really appreciate that. And also, want to give a shout out to Sergeant Joe Parker and his team. We had a little challenge, we've had a little challenged area, I know, right there off of, I call behind the old Mobile Net Station there, the corner Ninth and Kathleen Road and that area right there where the Family Dollar store is, because of some situation with an alley. And there's some challenges have been, happening there in that particular area. But to see what Sergeant Parker and his team is doing to clear up, clean up, and clear up as best as situation, I'm very appreciative, and I think you would be, too, if you knew about what's going on in that particular section of our city. So thanks to LPD again, and our LFD for what they have done. Appreciate that.
Any other comments? Great way to kick off your, yes, Commissioner, I'm sorry, city. Huzzah.
Step up there. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, just with all the conversation kind of about the strategic planning that we're having today and that upcoming in February, and the comments from the residents that are here, our assistant city manager and our manager of innovation and strategy, Emily Cologne, sent me an update. And so for community awareness, our community value survey that our citizens and customers can take, that ultimately gets compiled and presented to the commission, as you're aware, every year, the commission also does a value type survey, that is live right now. And so for the community, if you go to LKLDview, LKLDview, so it's short for Lakeland, LKLDview.com, if you go there, it's live and will be up through January 31st. And then you can take that community value survey that, again, ultimately gets presented back to the commission as part of that strategic planning effort. We will also, I'm not sure that they're there today, but there will be some paper copies that will be in the lobby of City Hall. So if anyone prefers the paper copy versus going online, we will have those available downstairs in the lobby. Not sure that they're there today, but they will be very soon. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? All right, if there are none, we are adjourned. Thank you. Now, we are going to stay for taking a picture of the commission. Stay a minute. I have to do that. We'll wait.